Roll call to order. I will take the roll call for in-person attendees. And then we will have a motion to allow the remote attendees. Trustee Foss, here. Trustee Ganguly.
Present.
Trustee Rogers.
Here.
Trustee Fruth, here. We have four members in person. Is there a motion to approve the remote participation of trustees Fairfax and Taco Bertin?
Someone.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Your remote participation has been authorized. If Virginia is able to join us, we will authorize her as well at that time. But I don't, I don't see her yet. But just in case, we will, we will revisit that if she is able to join us. Next up is the approval of the ammen- of the minutes. We do have a, the staff, the staff had provided us with the amendment to our minutes, which I believe we voted on the amended version last month. So this is just a display of what the amendment ended up being for us. So then we will have the minutes of our December seventeenth meeting. Are there any questions or corrections related to those minutes?
Was I really absent on the nineteenth November? I think I noticed that it said I was absent.
That was the, this is the minutes for December.
Okay.
December.
Yeah, yeah. The first, the first set was the, was just the amendment that, because we voted on amended minutes in December, um, the, yeah, December seventeenth. Now, I think, I do believe you were present for the November meeting, Ted. Except, but not for, um, December. Are there any changes to the, to those minutes for December? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Maya. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Opposed say nay. That is, those minutes are passed. Thank you. Suzanne, did you say something? Oh, okay, understood. Suzanne, it will be recorded as an abstention for that. Thank you. I received no public comments in advance of the meeting. There are, no one has signed in to make anything. Susie Ali, did you get anything?
Did not.
Okay. I, I just, you know, it's one of those things. I know one time we got something and I didn't, you know, weirdly it went to my spam, but I did not, I checked. But I just wanted to make sure. Trustee comments and board calendar. First thing is, I emailed everyone last week. I was mistaken in thinking that the February election that impacts a number of communities at Arndt Oak Park was the eighteenth, it is actually the twenty-fifth, which coincides with our board meeting next month. And would the, would it be possible for folks to meet on the eighteenth? Suzanne is nodding her head. Yes, okay. Madarima?
Um, no, I'm actually out of the country, but I would have been for the twenty-fifth as well, so.
Oh, you're unavailable for both of those days?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I know, because I was checking with Virginia about the possibility of her as the vice president running that meeting. And she is available for the eighteenth and she, and she and I talked. And so we're, if Madarima, if both weeks don't work for you, then I think we'll reschedule for the eighteenth of February. And is there a motion to, since we did vote for the board account, uh, meeting calendar, we do need a vote to change it. Is there a motion to change the February meeting from the twenty-fifth to the eighteenth?
Someone.
Someone.
I heard Suzanne.
I'll do second.
Suzanne, motion, Maya seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. It is, we have moved the meeting. Thank you, everyone. I apologize for not catching that when we were going over this originally. That's, that's, that's on me. The next item is the May thirtieth Laconi trustee banquet at the Nineteenth Century Club.
So I was gonna say Christine is probably the only one that can really come in at this point. But it is an event that some of you have attended in the past, something I organized. I will not be attending this year, but it should be really great. We have some really great speakers lined up. Monica Harris from Royals and a local author, Christina. And we're also looking to get another author, Claire Lombardo. So it should be really great. I hope that, just kind of keep it on your radar and we'll get closer to it. We will partnership people.
And by that, we'll have a baby.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Keep you updated. I'll probably not be able to commit to that till a little bit later. One way or the other. Our code directors report.
Hold on one second. I had a question. Calendar.
Yeah.
This Friday is the staff day, and I can't recall if the inter-MEDs had asked for us to be there or not, or where, whether, where we landed with that. Just wanted to clarify that. I mean, I couldn't be there the entire time, but if you want us to be there at some point, I might be able to stop by. But I don't know if it's better for it to be just staff.
I was, I was planning to just stop in at like right at the breakfast and just say hello, thank you to everyone and wish them the good day and leave. So I was gonna be, my plan was to drop my kids at school, come over, say, say a quick hello and, and get out of the way.
And I would say that's welcome for anybody, breakfast. I will share the agenda. You can pull that up. I think breakfast is from H. So eight to.
Eight to nine, I think, as well.
Yes, eight to nine. I, that was in the last hour story. So eight to nine, and then we're having, um, that's when our program will start. And then we're having our opening speaker at nine fifteen. So if you're welcome to come between eight and nine, say hi.
Okay, so if, I have a doctor's appointment. So that's the time that would be appropriate for board members. Just wanted to check.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Our code, our interim code directors report.
Happening soon. I do, the only thing I have is I did file our per capita grant report for centers in twenty twenty-three, two years behind, and then filed for us to get the grant this year as well. So hopefully everything still works out with that.
Thankfully, it's a state, it's a state funded grants, thankfully. So. And I do know they've, um, were talking about some funding cuts across state government. So it might be a. It might be, I, I would not be surprised if it is slightly reduced funding this year. But you never know. We have very effective advocates worth working with the ILA. And they come through because what we ask for, we, you know, we give, we give back, so. All right, staff reports. We have our strategic priorities reports for November and December.
So there's a lot in here. There's two months of activities. And Lee and I just have a few things to highlight. So in November, which is hard to think all the way back to November, um, we, we're a whole place. So that is something we just wanted to bring your attention to. We have really, we have three locations and staff get here at six AM, five thirty-six to set up those, you know, get everything open. Our pageant services and facilities teams ensured that everything was open and everything was ready for the election judges on the morning. So I just really wanna, you know, kind of welcome, like recognize the staff for all of that work. And kind of another fun thing, we had polls that were open to a race between the beloved characters of Pete the Cat and Bluey. You can see in those photos, the kids lining up and they were using pennies to cast a vote. And there were bins and you could see who was winning. And it was, this is an activity hosted by our children's services team. This was a very big, successful election. While Bluey was ultimately emerged as the winner, Pete also received a lot of love from the voters. So it's something fun. And then also in November, eleven leaders from public libraries across North America gathered in Washington DC for the Urban Libraries Council, creating youth opportunities initiative. Our manager of Midland High School Services, Latanya Jackson, was invited to attend this event. And she was invited to attend through grant funds that she was, she obtained. And this included a mix of presentations, panels and discussions. A lot of this focused, Latanya does a lot of work with mentorship into the library. Through two different mentorship groups using those grant funds. And so she was recognized for that and also got an opportunity to connect with some of these other libraries. And then the beginning of November, a number of agencies collaborated for the Day of the Dead event in Skoville Park on November second. This event included food from local vendors, performances. We had our idea box that was really done up. And they created sugar skull decorations. And I really want to recognize Admiral Sanchez, who is a community member as well as a library employee, who really spearheaded a lot of this work.
All right, a few collection highlights. Collection management librarian Andrea Trejo delivered a presentation to the adult services team, highlighting new library databases. We did a complete shift of our DVD collection out here on the second floor. Both collections and material handling teams rebalanced the DVD showing on the second floor. What we did was kind of lower the top shelf and then we distributed the remaining shelves. So more titles are at eye level, which make a much better browsing experience. Want to shout out to the facilities team who was instrumental. They literally had to move every shelf. So we're happy that we've completed that. So our IT team upgraded our security infrastructure, we have new firewalls. They're state of the art. These enhancements are designed to provide robust protection against a diverse range of cyber threats, safeguarding our data and ensuring the continue, continuity of our services. So that was a huge project and we're, we're very grateful that that is done and in place.
And now we're moving on to December. So as we near the end of our year, our fiscal year and our calendar year, we do have some kind of reports that we do. So we do a home delivery report. So in the, in twenty twenty-four, two hundred and ten patrons used our home delivery program with fifty-two new users added during the year. And this was an increase. So we're really, the previous year was a hundred and seventy-six users. So people are taking advantage of the service. And the team really goes out and makes these visits, you know, and in come up weather and they really do the, that work. And then in December, the Midland High School Services Team hosted a six-day exam cram. I was able to go out there and serve some food to the kids, give them a break from studying. But it was really great to see so many kids using our space as a place to kind of study for those final exams. And the library is once again recognize another year of dedication and hard work from the Friends of the Oak Park Public Library. This group's biggest event, which was the Edmond Book Fair, took place in July and wasted thirty-two thousand dollars, which is a lot of money. And this was an increase from the previous year. And the Friends have donated over seventeen thousand dollars to support library programs that were very popular among patrons, including our folk concerts, the Ballenger Lecture in November, featuring Chicago Sun-Times architecture critic Lou Deed. So very busy with that. And then in December, at the end of the year, we hosted a Kwanzaa event that was wildly successful. This was organized by myself with a team of dedicated staff from UK and a lot of the Midland High School Services staff. We had a market, we had our local artisans, the dance group. We had people leading it. Comer kids danced and it was, it was really just a magical evening and lots of people gathered together. I always say planning programs in December is stressful because you never know what the weather is gonna be. So it was beautiful weather, people came out and it was a wonderful event.
All right, so we have launched an interpreter compensation program. So what this does is we now have staff who are proficient in another language. So if we have patrons coming in requiring interpretation services, we have staff to do that. They are compensated. The languages most commonly used in our community, Spanish, Chinese, Polish, Tagalog, French and American Sign Language. And we really want to give a shout out to the Latin affinity group who came up with the idea and we're very happy to put that in place.
May I ask, what, uh, what certifications for the interpretation does a library staff do? And is that going to be something that like we need to have a budget line for that or, or whatnot in terms of looking forward into the future to continue the service?
There is a certification program that staff can do. I think it's like an extensive test that once they do that, they're passed and they're considered certified to be an interpreter of that language. I am not sure if we subscribe to that or is that just really available?
I think it was something, you know, I would, I would have to look into see if there's a cost per test, but you only do it once.
Okay, so it's like you, it's like one and done.
Yes.
You know, just making sure that you're proficient. Proficient, yeah.
I think the harder one that we had to do was the American Sign Language. That was something we had to find.
And I particularly remember the spin city where someone put it on their resume thinking that they would never have to do it.
Yes, yes. We did test everybody to see. And you had, I think, what we were saying, you know, there's a scale, you know, what they consider proficient. And so you had to score higher than like a six.
Okay.
It was like a ten point scale. You had to score higher than a six to be considered proficient. Not just that you took some college charge or whatever.
With the people who can speak other languages, I've seen that some of the employees have a badge that says how do I spend you all or whatever. Do they, do they all have something where somebody can go, oh, you know Tavalo or whatever? They do?
So there is a list. So we keep a list of the staff. People at the service desk have that. So if we do need those services, they can check schedules and someone will come up.
But it doesn't, it's not on their badge?
I don't think it's not on everyone's, yeah. I don't think it's on everyone's.
Because that really helps.
I'm thinking seven.
I think it's a really cool initiative. I'm, I'm happy to see it. I know like working in the nonprofit world, I feel like a lot of bilingual and multilingual people get tasked to provide those services without actually being very committed. So that's really exciting.
And our IT team installed NV Access software on all of the library's public computers. So this will help accessibility on the public computers for individuals with visual disabilities.
And about home delivery, that's the two hundred and ten people. How many of those are seniors and, and who are the people who ask for home delivery?
I would say it's mostly seniors, but I don't know the exact word of town of the ancient demographics for that.
Do we take those demographics or no? Because I mean, I will, I will say, I know, I know a lot of people who do. And there's a range from disabilities to, you know, younger person with a disability versus an older person, both of whom I know use that. But I, I just didn't know if we were keeping those demographics because there is a privacy issue for me.
There is a privacy issue.
That I think we would. With such a small piece, I wouldn't, I want to know, but I also am like, it might be a little bit too much to break that down.
Well, I like that. It is a privacy issue. I'm just delivering the books.
Yeah, right, right.
And also trying to collect that, then that could present a barrier to people, you know, asking for it. Of, of, you know, thinking, am I disabled enough? Is it a temporarily disability or a permanent disability? Like, and that kind of to kind of reveal that in order to get the service. If we have to service, we have to service. I don't think.
Suzanne, how many books are you, how many books are you getting this week?
I'm not, but I, I am aware of.
She has the right, she has the books that she is choosing private.
Yeah, I just think it's, um, because I had that thought too. But, and I noticed that there was a comment about a number of them being delivered to buildings that are prioritized for people with disabilities. And I wasn't even sure how comfortable I was with that. So, you know, while we may want to know that and it's, it would be great to be able to kind of highlight areas that we are supporting. I, I think privacy is really key in this if we're gonna actually like make it so that people can get books from the library.
Um, this is, I'm sorry, with regard to the privacy matter and the books that are being delivered. Do we, do we have a, you know, a packaging so that like the, the patrons are having a bit of privacy when the books are, are being delivered to their doorstep? So it's like if someone's, you know.
I think they're seeing them.
Oh, I think they're seeing them. There's no, okay, okay.
I mean, I thought they delivered them in branded bags.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so then they are, so, okay, that's, so then there is that element of privacy where it's not like their neighbors are going to see transgender teen questioning or I love Kirk Cameron or whatever. Yeah, got it. I love growing pains, but it kind of ends there unfortunately for Tom.
I had a, just with the, have, I know we have some policy about, you know, internet use and not compromising copyrights and all of that. But given everything that's been going on with the new release of the new standard of AI system and all like that, has our IT looked at that? Because I was, when I was trying to type up something in an email or Google Doc on my phone related to the library, the Google Gemini, which is their kind of embedded AI thing, was real funky and like repeating words as I was trying to use the swipe and everything like that. And it was really, really hard to use. I'm just wondering if like, has our IT begun to look at how do we, is, are they having a recommendation of continuing to use the, the Google Gemini system? Or are they looking at, do we want to have a, you know, I don't know if we need a board polit, you know, a library policy, but if, are they looking at that for guidance for the staff of how to use that? I know, I think you've talked about how we, we use it for some things and it seems to be, the, you know, some of those, you know, like we use it for, for various things, but it's just one of those things where is, have they looked at any kind of guidance? Or can they, can we ask them to look at guidance for, as these models are using stuff to just try and be, how they might interfere with our, our work or improve our work and stuff like that? It's just that, that piece of, it just was really jarring to me when I was like, I couldn't figure out how to turn it off in, in, in the Google system. It took me a while to figure out how to turn it off. And it was just like, if I'm running into this problem, I'm just wondering if why other library staff are running into this as well. And I would just like to have the IT department put that on the radar for them to, to look at. I'd, I'd, I don't, I'm not expecting them to like turn it off for the whole library, but just if we could have a, um, if they're, if they're looking at that enough, I think that might be awful.
Um, we can certainly do that. I mean, that's a big topic in the library world now. Public libraries looking at policies around AI. So I feel that, you know, they keep abreast of kind of what, what's top of mind in terms of AI topics. But yes, I can ask them to look into that. Because I too noticed that on my work emailing. Which one is there?
We've talked about a policy, an AI policy, but there isn't one yet, correct?
No, there is not.
No.
We'd love to see one.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I particularly would like to just appreciate that we are having this discussion during International Data Privacy Week. That has been part of my very busy week, so thank you all.
And then there are all the strange emails that we get to the board computer.
All the, all the sales stuff.
There has been some very strange uptick in.
Yeah, in the last couple of weeks, it feels like definitely a lot more just cold.
Cold.
Sales.
Sales.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Would you, would you like, would you like our, our help in deleting bad reviews you have on Google?
Yeah. I might get two or three a day.
Or as, as, as a board member, you're concerned about marketing.
Can we change?
Yeah.
And of course I'd say yes. Why couldn't you kiss? Okay, thank you.
No.
I have some comments and questions on the November report. In the anti-racism and equity for November, I'm not seeing a mention of BIPOC in here at all, either patrons or employees. And I'm just kind of concerned about that. I mean, there's, you know, celebrating Día de Muertos, but there's not, like, I don't know. It, it stood out to me for November of, of twenty twenty-four, that, the equity and anti-racism, that it wasn't doing what I would hope to see for that. So I'm not sure what happened. December looked better, so that's good. And then.
Suzanne, may I ask what you're looking to see? So, so our activities focused on the pageant services team. They do this really amazing program where they try to get, it's a restored approach to get folks to come back to the library instead of using a penalized approach to, you know, saying if you have over fifty dollars in fees, we want you to come back and write these personalized emails and letters to try to say, what can we do to work with you? So there's that activity. And then, yes, we have a new affinity group. And our affinity groups, we have a number of them. There's five affinity groups. We do have a BIPOC affinity group already. And this one was formed by a staff member for older adults. And it's been really successful. There was some conversation, how do you define an older adult? But, so is there something that we could?
So a couple of things there. One is that the cardholder re-engagement efforts, I actually had a question of why that was in anti-racism and equity. That felt a, a little misplaced to me. And then what, in terms of what I'm looking for is at a time when we've lost a pretty large number of we, as we went through and I, a couple of meetings ago, I think, of BIPOC staff, I would be hoping to see more being reported for, um, for efforts being made to, for retention and making the workplace a welcoming place, more internal. You know, I know it's a, like, a word, a term we're not. You know, I know it's a, uh, like, a word, a, a term we're not supposed to be talking about these days, but I don't care. We are because it's important. And that's, um, DEI efforts internally, rather than kind of, um, multicultural efforts, like multicultural, um, events, while they are really valid and really important and also do, um, help to contribute to, um, patrons feeling welcome in the library. I, I think that, um, I would just like to see a, a deeper effort on staff in that regard, um, internally.
Can I hear that? I think that I can, we can take that note. I will say, I, you know, I do want to really acknowledge the interpreter bonus program. You know, this came out of our affinity group, um, the Latinx affinity group. And so we were listening to our BIPOC staff. It was also six months in the making, um, of trying to figure out all these pieces of how do you test and how do you, what's the cost structure? And who can, is it an opt-in? Is it an opt-out? You know, these things take a long time. And so I'm really proud of the work of Director of HR, Bill Atres, and the affinity group. You know, he really worked with them to build this program together. It was not something that came just from a leadership team level. And so, you know, that's one thing.
I noticed that and appreciated that. I thought that was really wonderful. Was something that came from staff.
That did, it did come from staff. It just, it takes time. You know, it takes a long time to, to get these, you know, um, they had a lot of conversations about how do you make sure it's equitable? When some of these folks, she, she avoided, uh, are on the public floor with a name tag or can be identified. But there's a number of BIPOC staff of people who speak different languages who are in the back of the house. So how do we ensure that they can also participate and provide the same level of support? And that we're not always calling on the same people to speak, you know, to help interpret? And, and where are the parameters for that? And can somebody say, you know, I'm actually not comfortable using my language skills on that? You know, that was another part of this program that we wanted to make sure that maybe there are folks that feel called upon that aren't necessarily comfortable. And we wanted to listen to that messaging and, and kind of ensure that we built a program that could be, um, that could be representative of their needs. But I do hear that. So, so you would like to see more focus on staff initiatives?
To see that, that more is being done, yes. Um, in, in terms of work to address the loss of staff and, um, and to find a way to, to make improvements there so that that doesn't continue.
Yeah, I, I can echo this point too. I, I've had this thought for a bit as well. And, and I think it, it's like spelled out in those little bullets. Like the, what it really kind of to me is, is like the policies, how do we promote equitable outcomes? And so like, I love to see about Quan Zhen and this other stuff, but like, do those kind of aid in these? I'm not so sure. Like maybe it just needs to be better spelled out as to how a multicultural event does promote equitable outcomes? I don't know. I, I think in a time when DEI is being attacked everywhere, it's just like making sure it's really strong. But I also recognize we don't have a Director of Equity and Anti-Racism right now. And so that's going to make things harder.
And I appreciate, Suzy, that you're talking about the fact that you have this list, you know the people. As in my hospital where, you know, sometimes these people don't want to know that, that I can, I can help with this patient or whatever. So maybe, I mean, it's nice to have something that says, I speak Spanish. But it's having that list and having the patron who is there and then you privately can, okay, no, okay, I can take somebody out of facilities who knows this or whatever.
I think it's also that you're not relying on like the same one person to do the job of like ten staff. And you're recognizing that this is effort and this is skill. That is nothing that I.
And we are compensating you.
Yeah.
You know, that's the thing. This work has been being done for a long time, but it hasn't always been compensated. And so, you know, I think building this program is something that we're really proud of. And, and just the partnership of having the affinity group work with, you know, really to kind of create the program and like have a little say in that. I'm, I'm really incredibly proud. It's just, it takes time.
I feel like, like it is a model. I don't think I've seen other libraries really, I don't know, you would know a lot better than me. Do other libraries have something like that?
A lot of libraries, and some libraries are starting. We, we did recharge for our public library houses model. And they were the ones that said, here's where we should get the testing done from. Um, so I'm definitely seeing a trend, but you know, one of the things that, you know, we pride ourselves at Oak Park is being on the forefront of some of these, uh, initiatives to make staff feel supported. And, and this, you know, work can be valued and compensated, I think is so important. And I, and that is a protection strategy to ensure that, you know, if we are hiring and people are seeing that, oh, okay, I can come here. And they're not just going to say, oh, that's great. You speak Spanish, but we're not going to pay you. Like, you know, I think that's really important.
What is the, what is the compensation level? Like, how are they compensated? Is it on top of their salary and is it like?
On top of their salary.
And is it like in line with what somebody would be paid with whatever level of certification they have somewhere else?
So that's not really a, like an adequate comparison. It's, I think what they worked out is the model of, so we have part-time staff and full-time staff. So it's based on how many, one of the things they had to spend a lot of time thinking is it, like, are you punching in for like a shift? Or we're just going to pay you for this, um, you know? I think it's an hourly rate, my understanding, that's in addition to their pay. And then it's dependent on whether you're full-time or part-time, with how many hours you work.
But it's done with how many times you're doing the interpretation.
No, we're not, we're not tracking that.
Okay.
It's just like a skill.
It's just still, it's still just, we've decided to just say, you know, this is a benefit.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's such a great example of like what I would love to, like, and it's like not every month you're going to have a perfect example, but to me that speaks to process and policy. And like, that's how I understand, um, effective anti-racism work in an organization like this, I think.
Yeah, I, I will be honest. I almost miss that and I really appreciate you bringing that up because I, I do think it's actually pretty important when we're talking about anti-racism and it's under, you know, our finance and HR. But it is under engagement. And I think that's where things get difficult because it's like, is it engagement? Is it anti-racism? It, like, it's hard to put things in a specific box because I think there's a lot of programs where it's checking multiple boxes. And, you know, I will say when I was, you know, reading this and doing the scan and trying to get everything as quick as I possible into, you know, a hundred pages into one small brain. I, I don't think I really fully recognized all the fabulous implications and how we were having this conversation. And then you were making me think about all of my time at the court and how we dealt with interpreters there and, you know, those calls and, and, and whatnot. So I, I really appreciate that you.
Yeah, and I agree with that. It is sometimes hard to figure out where it would go in a, in a report.
Yeah.
And these are bi-months. So if you've got a program or initiative that's going across six months, that's going to be hard to display in like one, two or three months.
Right, and it's hard because it's like, you really couldn't report on it till you can report on it.
But so I would push back on that because I think to me, like, process is such a big part of anti-racism. So like, I'm okay with, like, I think having something that's like not done, but maybe it's just like, we are introducing this new thing and now this is how it's going to affect the library? Like, that could be. It doesn't have to be like a, it's done, so now we put it in a packet.
The hard part about that is we hadn't figured out all the concepts and bullshit. So we're telling you when it was officially announced to folks and they can sign up and have a process. Because if we do announce it before we have a process and staff are aware, but there is going to be questions. How much does it work? Like, you know, and so we don't have all those answers.
Yeah.
I also, you know, Suzanne, your point, um, in December under eight finance and HR, and I can see that it's, you know, it is the HR, uh, it's under stewardship again, is we did our actual, our other bi-annual EOPA survey. And so this was done in December, um, and we had an increase. So in June, we had a negative one employee satisfaction score. Um, and our December number was seventeen. Our goal is to get back up into the high thirties, forties. You know, it was forty-six last December. So I mean, it's a pretty significant, um, you know. I think being without an ED is definitely driving folks not feeling like, you know, things are, you know, there's only so much we can do about that. But I do think seeing an increase in score is helping to, um, and we have been reviewing those results and, and looking at those and looking for patterns and trends. So taking that into consideration as well.
Great, thanks.
And safety, that's a big one too, for that too, right? I can't remember where I saw this, but which page does the survey step on?
Uh, page fourteen, and at the bottom it does note the, um, the November twenty-ninth incident shooting.
The, um, but, uh, you know, so I, I really appreciate the discussion here and a lot of that. But I think, this is jumping ahead a little bit to like this, you know, the staff changes on the port on some of this and the bringing up of the, of, you know, the information that we got in November about, you know, the, the staff attrition metric regarding, um, uh, BIPOC staff. And you, in consideration of, you know, that this one piece took six months, I, do you have any kind of updates on the assess, you know, otherwise the assessment or ideas for work that's going to go into helping mitigate that or bring, uh, you know, make it, make us, you know, feel as a place where staff can, you know, that we are a safe place for, for staff to come, you know, staff of color to come?
I mean, it was shocking to see that sixteen out of the seventeen people who left were bi-month.
Yeah.
That's a difficult one. I mean, I, I think where the leadership team is at right now is going over the NPS survey, taking into account what staff have told us. You know, it's not, it's not as easy as just, you know, we hiring new people. We have to put a little bit of thought in why people left and what our staff wants in order to stay at the Oak Park Public Library. So it's, it's not a quick fix. Those conversations are happening.
And I, and I'm hoping that, um, you know, this is, and I'll touch more on this at, you know, towards the end, you know, as we get to the survey. But hopefully, those conversations along with the NPS and what we hear from holistic, will give us additional information, you know, to, to act upon, to what, you know, what to highlight, what to, what to strengthen and from both a board perspective. Because I, I know that, you know, there will be things that, you know, hopefully some of that feedback from the survey will be, you know, steps the board can do, that, you know, would facilitate that, uh, to promote that message, um, uh, for this, you know, for the staff. But I think this is something we definitely, I think everyone at the board table it still has their eye on, um, and just is, is very sensitive to as we, as we move through this, but, you know, given everything we've seen in the last week. It is definitely, um, safety in workplaces, both physical and psychological is a real, real thing. Yeah, it was, uh, slightly, I might, I know someone who works at the VA and last week was instructed to walk around the hot, they were instructed to walk around the hospital and remove anything diversity related at the VA, it happens, within days. So, uh, it's, we, I think it's as important that we continue to be mindful of it and, and try and be supportive of our staff in those things and make sure that, yeah, that work is done. So it's going to be, it's going to be hard. There's going to be a lot of hard conversations as we move, so, but thank you for this. And, but yeah, just in case you didn't already know, the board is going to, is going to keep, is going to keep on that one too. So.
Thank you.
And I, Matt, you brought up additions and terminations. And so noticing that, um, we lost a multicultural librarian after only two months. Is that right?
Yes.
And do we have a new librarian higher? And then number two, assuming that there was some sort of accident review to try and get a sense of how we lost.
So I will say, we don't talk about personnel issues, Mr. Ferrax, so I cannot speak to the latter.
Right. Right, no, I don't mean specifics. I'm just saying that, um.
I can't speak about it. I'm sorry. You know, we have had a challenging time keeping somebody in this role. And so we are reevaluating the multicultural librarian role to better understand how we can, um, continue longevity in the role.
Okay.
Good answer.
Do we, uh, do, is there anything in the, um, in this, in the statistics report?
So this is just a reminder that we are just doing, we moved to doing quarter of the statistics. So this is, uh, Q four. So we're seeing, you don't see this number board packet. But this is the Q four, uh, statistics. And you can see kind of how we performed through the different quarters.
Have we, is it kind of been a thing across all libraries that we have seen? Like the digital only accounts start to just kind of, is that kind of just a, I don't know if there's been talk of a national trend as we move farther away from kind of the era of COVID lockdown where that originated from? Is that, I'm not saying, this is not a suggestion in any way that we get rid of it. I don't want anyone to think that, but I'm just curious. Is this, is this a, because I can't remember what the last numbers were, but I'm just wondering if this is a thing as we get more, um, far, farther removed from that? If that is a thing that is waning, leveling off? Is, is that a sense that's happening other, in other places? That you know of, or is?
I've not heard anything in terms of like, across the board in public libraries. It decreased a little bit, but not by much, um, over the year. I think people find it convenient.
True.
And so we always want to keep that in mind.
I would say change this community. This library is, is a hub, you know, it's in a great location. And so, you know, I think that there is appeal to having a digital only account. But, you know, I think there's so many people who like to come in here and use this library. And so it's not a huge, you know, waking up across the quarters. What I was struck by is that in Q one, it was one forty-three, you know, the weather's bad. Like maybe people are less inclined, you know, to just maybe create that additional digital account so they can get those books on their Kindle and, you know, take advantage of some of our online sources and then kind of come in. So, but it is just a negative five percent.
Okay. As I just, I saw someone, there was, um, it was a YouTube short of someone who was complaining about they got that the evil of company Libby was finally cutting them off from their, uh, digital access that they had established through. like, like four or five different public libraries across the country to get access to e-audiobooks and how it was negatively impacting their reading goals for the year. And they're like, they're, they're, they're cut, they're, you know, they're cracking down on our access. I'm like, you're in Kansas City, you, 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 I'm sorry, you're gonna have to wait a little bit longer to get to your, you know, you, you may not accomplish your reading goal in Kansas City, but like you are at the same time taking up space in other lines for other people who are in those systems, but it's just one of those things where it's like, and it got me thinking about the digital cards and how people use them, how it has really benefited a lot of people, but this guy was clearly abusing it to, you know, you know, just because he wanted to get more, you know, he didn't want to wait in line for stuff. He, it wasn't like he was being, it wasn't, he wasn't living in rural Missouri where there were collection restrictions and all of this stuff. He was in a major center where he just didn't want to wait. Um, so it, it got me, that got me thinking about it, but, um.
Doesn't he have a list and he could like juggle ones? Right, I, I'm sorry, I'm just too logical.
It was, I, I, my eyes hurt more.
But the old, the old guy can go to the Doyle Library and now get a print of New York Times.
Or the not-so-old mother who likes New York Times.
Are you calling me old at that?
Okay, then, um.
In this, um, statistics, the community outreach is showing a plot. But when I'm looking at the numbers, oh, over last year, I see. Over last year, Q one. Okay, and that's just, is community outreach just book bike events?
Uh, no, it is other outreach events as well. So it does all outreach, so book bike events and then, you know, when we go to the middle and high school, you know, and table events, um, participate in community events, um, so that kind of is across the spectrum.
Okay, um, and off of that note, did, did the, um, book going to laundromats ever actually come to be? And is that happening?
Book, bike and laundromats?
Book, bike and.
Not necessarily book bike, but like books being.
The pop-ups.
The pop-up libraries? The pop-up libraries, um, are still growing, um, it's a project. Um, I do believe it's at the CRC and then there's one at a, it was in the last board report, uh, a barber shop. Um, but I'm not sure if we've made it to laundromats. I don't know if that was explored and then, um, you know, the partnership was not able to do that. I know that Villatall has approached us about doing it. Um, and they, you know, Christina Waters wants to work with us on that as well, so.
So there, there are, um, the e-pop-ups, you can get the e-resources, but there are also, um, physical collections at some businesses, organizations, so it's supposed to be digital and.
Right, and we're supposed to have that, the new recreation center, but we have kind of a little segment of pop-up, right?
We have one, we have one.
And has there been a, has the conversation come up about, um, the vending? The kind of the library vending machines? I saw some in San Francisco at a, um, community center.
Not yet, but it, it's on my wish list.
It was really amazing there, there, I, um, I went to a community center in San Francisco. And there was a literal vending machine. It was from the library. And it had books in it that people could, like, check out by using the vending machine at this. And it was in a community, like a community center that had opened up, um, that was a nonprofit, um, to, with the intention of being a free third space. And so they, they collaborated with the library because there wasn't a, a local branch, like, right nearby in that neighborhood. So I thought that was pretty cool. Like, I'm not a big vending person, vending machine person in general, but that would do it for me.
Yeah.
Although I'm sure I'd be like, super angry, cause I'd be like, okay, and I'd be like, stop, kind of like, no! I need to know how the women ends! Oh my gosh, come on!
Okay. Um, other, who, any other questions related to the staff reports? We'll move on to the, um, financials. We have November and December financial reports.
I, I did have a general question about financial reports. I noticed that a check for about forty-five hundred dollars that was supposed to go to Baker and Taylor got cashed by somebody other than the vendor. What happened to that check?
Where?
What was that thing in the background too?
Um, I just saw that there was a, a lost check. And it was both, um, it was a check issued and it didn't go to the vendor. And somebody cashed it.
Was it lost? I'm not sure.
Somebody, somebody cashed it, but.
I mean, we do, so I will share that we do have physical checks that we print in the house that we mail. And that is a, a vehicle for fraud, right? Somebody can intercept it, get the check and, you know, what the, um, another thing that we could potentially explore down the line, um, it's, it's some work I've done, I think, is ACH payments, which are direct, um, payments to the vendor. As it's on hurdles, but there's less fraud, you know, there's less washing of the checks or, you know, whatever.
So somebody cashed this forward to Baker and Taylor.
I'm not, I, I, I can't speak to that one exactly.
I was just looking at, I don't wanna go through the weeds here, but, um, so, but our bank will make us whole, right?
Yes, yes.
I guess I, yeah, there it's, unfortunately, it's something I run into at the clerk's office, we get. Cause we issue checks and people have had checks stolen, so, yeah. We get. That's, uh,
Baker and Taylor will get it spun.
We'll look at it.
Baker and Taylor will get it spun eventually.
Yes.
All right. With that, if there are no other questions about the financial reports, is there a motion to approve the dispersment journals for, uh, November and December? Some moved, is there a second?
Hold on, what's that? Yes.
Seconded by Maya. Are there any further questions or discussions about the dispersment journals? Hearing, hearing none, uh, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed then? Those opposed say nay? All right, uh, we approved the exciting dispersment journals while you were. Did you have any questions about the, any of the financial reports? Okay. I, additional reports, I-GOV.
Oh, um, I'm so sorry, uh, I'm trying to remember. Further discussion about, oh, I know, we had, um, we had someone come from the League of Women Voters and speak to us, um, and have a conversation about how they might be able to help I-GOV in terms of supporting, um, people running for office. Um, and just on a, a really rich conversation actually about, um, what is needed, what we can, you know, what we can offer as I-GOV, what somebody like the League of Women Voters might be able to help. Just to, to try to get more people comfortable with running, you know? We talked about the fact that like, and other, other bodies have had this too, where there's an appointment open, the position for appointment, and there's a lot of interest. And then sometimes when people are running for offices, it's far fewer. Um, and so where's the disconnect there and how can we help people in the community understand what's involved in running, uh, for office and what's involved in, in being in an office?
Okay. Uh, COG did not meet, uh, we do not yet have a, have not sent out any emails related to a schedule for twenty twenty-five, so I don't know when, when or if that meeting, the next meeting will be. Uh, Planet Green?
Uh, we had a, a meeting this past week and it was, one of the really interesting things is that the last climate conference, which was attended by Vicki Scanlon and, uh, several students from the area. Next climate conference, uh, that, that conference was in Baku, Azerbaijan. The next one will be in Brazil. And in Brazil, they don't think they have enough hotel rooms and crime is a problem. It's just kind of weird, but, so, very interesting.
Okay.
But Planet Green is going very well and we're doing a lot of good solar projects and I'm very happy that the library with our staff here are working on this and particularly thinking about government subsidies and solar and what we're doing here in the library. Um, it's, it's a wonderful organization.
Great.
But I don't think I'm gonna go to Brazil for the climate conference.
Not a beach person Ted? You're not a beach person?
Ted, how does Planet, Planet Green work with that other, um, that one, other event? What was it called?
One Earth.
No, not One Earth, cause that's like the festival, right, the, um, film festival, probably? But then there was like, there, there was that event like one night and then the next night there was another climate event at the library that they wanted feedback. Was Planet Green involved in that or no?
I, I did not attend that.
Okay, that's what I shared out on board. I was with Derek Peter, who's on the commission for something for the village in.
Is that the Four C or C four?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, C four.
What's that?
I know, I, I, I just know the name of it and I remember they gave a presentation at COG a couple of years ago.
It just sounded like.
And we, we try so hard with Planet Green, River Forest, Milk Park, to get other communities going. And sometimes Broadview and Maywood, you know, they just.
I was just curious, I didn't know if they have, um, relation to each other or not.
But Gary Cunnin does a wonderful job, so.
Okay. Um, unfinished business, um.
Except your principal.
Oh, I'm sorry, friends, thank you.
How, how many, how many friends do we have in Friends of the Library?
You know, you're the second person to ask me that today and I feel very unprepared. And there was twelve or some people there yesterday, so they have a decent, um, board. But I believe that you donate money and then you're considered a friend of the library. So, but you're now on the board, so they have a number of friends, right? They have a number of board members.
But I, I remember when I first moved to Oak Park, um, I wanted just to be a member. And then it all of a sudden dropped off. It was so hard for me just to get a bag and get my twenty dollars or whatever. So are the friends really trying to recruit people?
They are, we had a board member last night. Um, and, uh, I do get, so you can join the friends, it's on our website. Um, I would be curious, so they have members, they have the board members and they also have, yeah, friends members, so, but that's a great question for Russ.
Because I think there should be hundreds and hundreds of people in Friends of the Library.
They did tell a really wonderful story yesterday, so there was somebody who was in Washington DC and she had the tote bag on her, she was on a train and she saw somebody with the Friends of the Library tote bag with the moon, the moon, her mom designed it.
Who designed it?
And it was just like this amazing story and it went to us and Russ had this great email. But we were like, okay, who was that friend of the Oak Park Library in Washington DC? So it was kind of an awful story, but, um, we had a weight meeting yesterday, uh, they have been very busy. Uh, they, we, um, have not always aligned our donations to the Friends, have not aligned with our fiscal year. So that was something I worked really hard to do. So they were able to give us our dispersment yesterday. I submitted our funding request in December, um, and they donated twenty-three thousand dollars to the library. Um, fourteen of that is unrestricted donations, so it's up to us to decide how we wanna spend it. And then the other nine thousand is for specific events that they typically do. The Barbara Ballinger lecture, um, their folk concerts. And then the Chicago classic is something that our middle and high school manager has been running. It's, they take a group of teens down to Soldier Field and they get to, it's like, um, there's a college fair and they get to go to a football game and it's a really wonderful thing. So we had a wonderful meeting, um, and they are also, there is a community foundation fund that the library was managing for the Friends, but it's called the Friends Library Fund. So they're gonna take ownership of that as well. Um, but they did have a good meeting, they're really getting ready for the book sale. And we have their committees, um, and we're just trying to get things a little bit more on the shu- mo- and stuff. It was a good, it was a good meeting.
That's cool, but I mean, there were just so many people who were just very happy to give.
Yes, there's a lot on our website.
Yeah, I, I would say that for many, many years, the, the Friends did not have the most coordinated effort in recruitment. That they, that they really relied on the people who were interested in the book fair. And that was, and that was their interest. And if you were interested in volunteering for the book fair, then we were, they were happy to have you, but they weren't, they didn't do a lot of other.
There was a wonderful little brochure from the ALA that said, when the Friends aren't friendly.
Yeah.
Our Friends are friendly.
They are, but I'm just, it's something, now that I'm getting off the board, I'm thinking, you know.
Yeah, they'd love to have you. And they do, to your point about recruitment, they, we just got them set up with a Squarespace site, a Square account on our website, so it makes it really easy to donate now, so, um, you know, definitely.
Because it's not so much about the money that they would give, it's just the community involved.
And I know they did yard signs this year, which they hadn't done for the book fair. So, yeah, they're really excited.
And the book, and the book has a moon?
Yeah, oh, there you go.
I know that every, um, time that I've been in one of our parades, they have like a, an amazing turnout for Friends, like they really. And I really appreciated you calling them out in the report. And I was just trying to remember if I saw something that did, was something mentioned in the, um, in one of the emails that went out from Communications, or am I imagining that? About Friends and acknowledging them.
If, you know, we tried to acknowledge them when they sponsored programs, they sponsored Fonz, they did the Ballinger lecture, they did the Julie Chisholm cooking, um, I'm not sure, I see a lot of emails.
Yeah, I know, I've seen like all the emails and then the, these reports and everything and I'm just trying to remember if I've mixed those two up. But I, I, I really appreciate them getting recognition and appreciation. I think that's really important, um, for us.
And they are eager to participate in the executive director search. They asked me to pass that along.
I, I feel like there's so many like calls to action, being like, join the Friends, like, in this thread against the Macrispy and everything, so maybe we'll see a big, um.
We loved the library, Suzanne.
No, I sent you the link to the Friends of the Oak Park Public Library. So it is in your email, that's your personal address.
We love the library. Yes. And thank you for that and thank you for catching me on, on skipping over that. But now, uh, following their interest into our executive director search, uh, Matt Barima, would you like to update us on that process?
Uh, yeah, so, um, I wanted to thank, uh, of course our partners at Koya, but also our search committee. So Lee and Ted and Suzanne, uh, we went through six, um, candidate interviews for the first round and, uh, we haven't had our unpacking session yet, that's, that's tomorrow. It was supposed to be, uh, last week, but, uh, I was sick and turns out quorum wasn't met. So we're meeting, we're meeting tomorrow, um, evening from six to seven thirty, uh, to, you know, figure out like the hierarchy of candidates, uh, but I, I, I think, I think Lee and Ted and Suzanne would all agree that we have a really tough job ahead of us and the meeting tomorrow in the, in the best way possible, that we, we really heard from, uh, some incredible candidates and it's, it's going, um, just so. That we, we really heard from some incredible candidates and it's, it's going just so well. I think that everybody that we've talked to has been incredibly compassionate and staff oriented. And, you know, just, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm both looking forward to the conversation tomorrow and also very trepidatious about how long it's gonna go, how long it's gonna get because, you know. So I, I wanted to say, I wanted to say that I think that it's, and the, the effort. Also Ted bought us lunch for one of the days when we were there. From nine something in the morning to like four-ish or three something. So thanks to, thanks to Ted for that too. I wanted to bring up something that I sent around in an email to sort of flag it for conversation today. And that is about the search committee's, you know, continued empowerment to make decisions on behalf of the, on behalf of the board. So specifically, we're hoping to have second round interviews either next week or the week after. Is that, yeah, I know that I'm pretty sure that that's right. But anybody who's on the search committee can, can correct me if I'm wrong. But that's the week of the 3rd of February and then possibly the 10th of February. And I don't know that it's going to be possible to have as many board members involved in that second round interview, just in terms of coordinating. I, I felt pretty strongly that we were, the search committee is empowered to go ahead and do the second round of interviews. I wanted to clarify that that was everybody's understanding, you know, get the, get the buy-in. And also point out that what that would mean is that at the next board meeting, there would be enclosed session. Koya would give sort of a, a report to the board. Obviously with confidential information about the candidates that would summarize the conversations that the, the search committee has had and our recommendations. And it's on the basis of that information and any questions that the search committee could answer for the full board, that the full board would then decide who we would choose from the second round interviews to be finalists for the search. So again, so I wanted to clarify that process and I wanted to make sure that we were all on the, on the same page about what that would involve. Obviously I can and Suzanne can and Ted and Lee can answer any questions that you may have so far, but just, yeah.
As, as I've been reflecting upon all those interviews, I think the most important thing to me now in listening to these six wonderful candidates is I would love to have more input from the staff. That, and Lee has been a part of most of the interviews. I, I think that listening to staff about what their views are as we, in the search committee tomorrow speak. I really would like to know because it was very interesting and I'm not going to speak about any of the six. But I, I think that how they, how these candidates can work with staff would be, for me, one of the most important things as we look to find hosts. Ma Adarima, do you agree with that?
Yeah, I, I absolutely do. I will say that Koya, of course, did a staff survey that, and also had officers to hear from staff specifically about the executive director search. There's some information from that that's still kind of forthcoming, you know. But the thing that they pointed out is that, believe it or not, I mean, I know that we've had a, a conversation or several conversations about the, the ruptures and the sort of trauma that the community, the, the library community has gone through in this, this last year. And not to shortchange any of that, but at least at the tur, at the, at the level of priorities, that there is actually a significant amount of overlap between what the community is asking for, what the staff is asking for and what trustees have pointed to. I will say that a notable exception is the question, for instance, of staff safety, which I think came up in the, the materials that we had for today's board meeting too. So I think that that's an, that's an important one to keep in mind. Suzanne pointed out in the meeting, in the search committee meeting, that, you know, the staff survey also came out just like, I think, the, the day after, you know, the, the, is that right? The day after?
It was the community, it was the community one. The community.
It was the community one. Right, exactly.
Days after the, the shooting.
Yeah, right.
So I would imagine that that.
Do, do I think that the staff survey was timed in the, in the same way? Isn't, isn't that rightly?
No, the staff survey was early.
Yeah.
It was early.
Earlier on the process. Much, much earlier. Before, before.
Okay. I'm sorry. I think I'm confusing the, maybe.
Survey we did before finalizing the position profile because we wanted input for that. They were actually kind of first, that I think Koya approached staff even before us.
Yeah.
But the, yeah, the community survey. But it was interesting what you're pointing out is that there was a lot more alignment in terms of priorities and, and overlap in that than we might have expected. So that's, that's a good though. I do think that having Lee on the committee is extremely valuable. And I was gonna suggest tomorrow, like, I would love to hear Lee's response first for the same reason that you're pointing out Ted. Now, I don't know, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Lee. But that was my thought was like, I definitely, the staff perspective is something that is so important and I don't have. So I have, you know, community experience. I have board experience. So, and perspective. But I, I don't have what it is to be a staff member there and to.
Yeah. And second, I don't, thirded about the importance of, of Lee on that committee. I just don't think we would have been able to do this without you, Lee. And I, and I want to say that I am particularly just taken by, not surprised by how like the complex ways that the, obviously it's not like just, even though Lee is just one person, it's not just one perspective that we're, that we're getting. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know if anybody else, me, absolutely. Or, you know, Ted or Suzanne, you want to add anything? But we should have more for you after tomorrow's meeting.
One question. I have one. You're saying this timeline, Ma Adarima, is that you're going to be gone for the next board meeting, right?
Yeah.
So, talking about making, and you're going to be gone, like for committee meetings too for, there. So.
Not meetings. I don't, I don't think. Maybe.
Oh, meeting, maybe. Sorry. I'm a little panicked about you leaving. But I'm, I'm just looking at the calendar and trying to figure out if we are going to be able to get to that, that by the next, particularly since we moved it up to the 18th. So we can.
Well, the, yeah, the, the hope was to have it done by, the hope was to have it done in the next week, honestly, in the, in the week of February 3rd. I think is what they, you know, because obviously we won't have three to four candidates for the second round. There will be fewer. We don't know exactly how many, how many candidates yet. That, that remains to be determined in tomorrow's conversation. So I, I am actually, I was looking back at our original timeline and I'm actually quite impressed at how late we are not. I would have, I would have assumed that we would have been, you know, like it just seems like par for the course, that things would take a lot longer. But I think we've been kept on, kept to a schedule and kept on like a tight and, and really effective deadline.
We'll probably get more information tomorrow around. So when you were asked about the calendar, I opened my calendar and I looked at it and when you're leaving. And I have a gazillion doctor's appointments and just trying to figure out if we will by the 18th since we moved up the board meeting, like if we'll be going this age forward. Maybe we can just move forward. It seems ambitious.
I, I would say to the whole board that the six candidates that we've interviewed are all great. And that we've not, and Koya has been wonderful to work with. And thirdly, we have not heard about any more candidates that are coming in. So I think we are focusing tomorrow on these six candidates.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, unless, I, I think part of the agenda for tomorrow Ted is any possible additional candidates that they may have talked to. Because Koya has said repeatedly that they're, they're committed to talking to as many people are interested to make sure that we get the best candidate, best candidate possible. So, I mean, so we don't know for sure. But again, you know, that's, those are the kind of specifics that we really hope to get solved by or have some more clarity on tomorrow. And I, I promise to reach out and communicate with, with whatever it is that we decide that can be, that can be shared. Can I, am I, is it okay for me to A, to see if Lee wanted to say something? And B, go back to the, like, approval of the, of the process that I had outlined?
Sure.
Um, I've just been absolutely delighted with the candidates that we've attracted. Like you said, Ma Adarima, this is going to be difficult. You know, you, you think that maybe like the majority might be good and you, and you might have, you know, two, three fall off. But no, these are excellent candidates. So I'm very excited. I know the staff is very excited and are extremely happy with, we've kind of kept pace during the, during the whole process. So I'm excited about tomorrow. We can, we can talk about the interviews. But yeah, I think we're, we're moving at a great pace. I think we're going to get a great person. So I'm extremely happy about that.
That's really, that's really heartening. And thank you for, and thank you for everyone on the committee for your work. It's been, you know, have, you know, having seen, you know, some of the materials and, and that. It, it, it's, it is really quite, you know, the, between the, the candidate profile, the development work, the edits to Koya, what was put out there, the conversations Koya had, the first round interviews. I think I, it's, you know, I don't think it's been mentioned here, but the, the, the search committee basically gave up the better part of two days doing first round interviews, taking time out of their, their, their lives and, and, and work to do that for us has been an incredible work and deserves recognition because that has allowed this to be taken very seriously and given real heart and thought. And I really appreciate that. And circling back to Ma Adarima's position, I continue to have comfort and confidence in the work the committee's doing and am comfortable with them performing the second round interviews and making the, a recommendation to the board of who to bring in as finalists. For however that finalist process looks, I am comfortable that you have clearly all shown investment and seriousness as you approach this and you know this information and these profiles well. The board members know the rest of us fairly well and what, you know, you, you can't get inside all of our heads, but we've been here with all of our discussions. And I feel like you may not know every question I have, but you, you know me well enough that if you see something that I would be, you know, maybe a little hesitant to dawn, I think you might know that well enough that you could respect where, where I'm coming, where I might be coming from in this process and be ready. And I, and I have confidence in what you would bring as recommendations for finalists. So I'm good with you taking on the second round and bringing a report to us once that's done. I'll let the others speak as well.
Thank you, Matt.
Ditto. I just think you all are doing amazing and I, hi. I'm happy to just come and see the finalists and, and check them out. I'm so excited to hear like, it seems like it's the consensus is we have six really great candidates and that is so wonderful to hear. Yeah, good work, everybody.
Congrats.
Really quickly, I just, I also wanted to say thank you to the, you know, like the, our friends in IT who, who set us up. We've had, you had some marathon days and no technological hitches that, that were disruptive or, or anything. And I just, I just, I'm really, I'm really grateful for, for that just being like a, an issue of no concern.
They're a fantastic team.
That, that, that's also wonderful. Cause I think that having that confidence just takes that one piece of concern off of this, that you know, you're not gonna have that, those hiccups. I think that probably, that helps a lot. So Ma Adarima, does that, does that answer your question?
Yes. Thank you. I appreciate your confidence. Thanks, everyone.
You're very welcome.
It's well earned.
Yes, been very well earned. Hard, hard work earned for sure. Following up on that new board member orientation and handbook, this is a bit of a follow-up on our December meeting. Christina and I are, are working on an outline of materials. I sent it in, on a Google Doc in, in our board accounts. I have shared it with everyone. I shared it just before tonight. I forgot, I shared it with her the other day as I was typing it up. Creating an outline for these items, you know, looking at what is the job description of a, of a board member, both from a statutory level as well as like what are, you know, the quote, you know, the legal requirements, as well as what are our internal expectations for that? For what is the job description, followed by general expectations, you know? Attending board meetings, you know, represent us at outside meetings. And, and this outline is the beginning of, of a process to identify framework pieces and topics that we want to, once we have those key topics identified, then build out from there. Whether it's adopting something from another library or creating our own. There is, there is a lot of good information out there produced by other organizations. And we can for sure adopt it to ourselves, you know, based off of our needs. Or if we feel like nothing's fitting, we can start from scratch. But I just, I didn't want us to feel like we had to create everything anew. If there are good resources, we can tap into. So our board meetings, outside meetings, organizations, please feel free to add some things here in the Google Doc as you see them. As we look at committees and reconstituting committees and, you know, of course that will implicate changes to our bylaws and, and those pieces. But, and then as well as, do we want to have an expectation that board members attend library programs? So that they have that sense in that, in those pieces. And then going into, and you know, we can of course add more to that on the expectations area. Trainings and resources, FOIA, open meetings, a budget training. You know, the budget process, how we break it down, you know, you know, organizational, you know, to get familiar with all of our various services that we all do. I think, you know, we talked a little bit tonight about home delivery. There are still people in this community who don't know we do home delivery. I run into this all the time and people are, you know, it's like, oh my God, I just learned you guys did home delivery. I've lived here all of my life. I didn't know that. And, and it is one of those services that until you're in a position where you might need it, you, you're probably never going, you may never come across, you know, that information. And so, you know, but as a board member, it is, I think, you know, beneficial for us to kind of have a full scope of that. And so a briefing around that and then. And then I listed as the communication table. I think it was the, it was, you know, something we could adapt from what we saw at D97. I think Madarima, you saw that, or maybe it was Suzanne who saw that document. I think it was Madarima because you were here. And found it really helpful in terms of guiding us, guiding trustees as to how to reach out to staff, you know, for topics and stuff like that. And of course, we can expand it, revise it with, when, you know, the new board and the new executive director comes in. And of course, you know, we can add other things. You know, this, you know, the handbook will probably also include something, you know, the bylaws. Maybe we pull out the policies that are just related to the board and put them in the back of this as well. You know, we, you know, we encourage trustees to know all, you know, be familiar, you know, read through all of the policies but yours are the ones specific to the board. Do we want to have, that's, you know, you know, an ethic statement? You know, we do take an oath of office and there are general principles of how we are supposed to conduct ourselves, but some sort of affirmative statement about how we will, you know, behave ethically. It's something, I don't know that not, not everyone might think we need, but it's something I saw in a lot of other websites and resources as we put this together, as I was looking through this for information last month. So it was just an idea for consideration. So Christina and I will continue to kind of put this together. Please feel free to post comments, ideas, suggestions in that Word doc. As long as no two other people are in there before, we much, we must, as, as we are talking about training and, and open meetings, we must continue to abide it. So if you see one other person in there, it's okay. If you go in and there are two other people working on it, please leave the document. Just so that we continue to maintain that, you know, that piece. But we'll continue to build this out. I will add the links to the various documents I found on the next page following the outline in the document so that they are there and we can all kind of look at them and, and find them. Please add links to other documents you find so that we continue to have this resource for future boards. But I just wanted to bring everybody kind of where we're at with, with that piece.
So Matt, I've not looked at the document yet.
True.
But one of the interesting things in when, when we were speaking to the candidates for executive directors, it was a very direct question was asked, is the board appointed or elected? And there were, some of, some of our candidates didn't know. And so I think that that's, I mean, anybody now who's running must know that you have to, you have to run in this election. But there are lots of library boards where they're appointed.
Including. Including some of our neighbors, Forest Park, for example.
So I think that that's something in the handbook that should be there.
Okay. Well, I think that could definitely be in that first part with the statutory.
Right, exactly.
Yes, Suzanne, sorry.
Question about, I know early on in the conversations about this, and again, I haven't looked at the document either. I started to go in there and then saw there are a lot of people there and I'm like, wait a minute, does that count? But there were conversations about how we make decisions together and different kind of, Christina talked about different models of group decision-making. Is that something that's, that you two have discussed? Is that something we're going to kind of look at? Because I think there's some value in that.
I don't think we would make that call without the board. I think like, I don't know if you all remember, I sent out a handbook a few months ago that had some like ideas, like questions like that. And I, I don't think that our, like he and I would make those calls. I think that that would be like the whole, is it a policy, is it a procedure or protocol? Like what are our communications protocols? Like I think we can kind of maybe say what we think it currently is. But then if it's a decision point, I would hope to at least bring it to the board so that.
Of course.
We're not, we're not.
Process of making a decision about the process of making a decision is appropriate? Yeah, I just, I wasn't sure if it was included. It was like kept in the, the queue of things that we would be discussing to make sure.
I think it's like, well, I, I'm thinking about this. It's, I think it's, there are some things that are going to be kind of easy to pull together. And then there's going to be some things that are going to be decision points and those are going to be harder because we're going to have to come together. So I say let's start with what's simple and then kind of go from there. So we've just kind of started. We'll, we'll.
And of course, we can provide, you know, resources for, you know, link to resources on, in here, you know, as, as any good, you know, you know, resource friendly organization, we can, you know, provide plenty of citations to other sources for people to reference for ideas. And I, you know, and some of, and some of that pieces, this, I'm hoping this would be something that would be enduring, that we would be able to kind of, you know, tweak as, you know, laws change and pieces, and those pieces as opposed to, you know, the decision-making process and those debate things is as much of a, is it's a fluid thing of the seven people who are at the table as well as the conditions of the day. So I think perhaps resources for how debates can be handled, how that, you know, those, you know, those things can be provided to people. But I think perhaps this is more of these, more hard guardrails in which we operate. I will say, and on the two, on the following of this, Suzanne had a question for me about open meetings thing. And I did, and we were, and she and I kind of looked at our policy around closed meetings and those pieces. And that had not been updated in 20 years. So I did ask our, our good friends at Ansel Glink to take a look at it, to make sure to have any recommendations for us in terms of the updates related to statutory law, thankfully. It wasn't much. So, but we will have something at our next meeting from them for, they didn't get it in time for us to be considered here, but also we weren't bugging up against anything that was really timely on this. But it's been 20 years and they did have some general, just some minor tweaks to our policy related to closed meetings. And they just recommended that we adopt, you know, something that, so I'll make sure that gets shared to staff and the rest of the board. But I didn't want to muddy it ahead of, of tonight since we wouldn't be looking at it for that. But so, you know, we are looking at those pieces and that, and that's that thing related to that training. I think we can also, and there was, I think I mentioned this last month, the, there is a, someone at Ansel Glink who does trainings for boards on open meetings and does, you know, webinars on that that we can, once the new board is in, can engage to have the whole board go through that, schedule that, that, you know, from the, you know, the person who provides us legal counsel would, would might be advisable. So, but again, that's for, you know, after May when the new board comes in. All right. If there are any other questions, suggestions on that?
Well, I mean, I think, I'm sorry, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just to, to follow up on what Suzanne was saying. I was wondering if maybe we could just have a sense of where you think you might be by the next meeting, on the next couple of meetings and how we could help. I mean, I, I heard your call, Matt, for adding links to the document to things that, that we thought were useful. But is, I mean, I, Suzanne, I may have misunderstood you, but I thought maybe you were asking for a clarity around the process, like how the decision would get made. So I'm wondering like, should we, do we sign off on a, on a section at a time on, you know, like, maybe we could just have a clearer sense of what the next couple of steps are?
Oh, sure. I, what I would, what I'm hoping to have by our next board meeting is kind of a, a set outline for the sections that we would want to have, you know, in terms of, in the outline. And for the training and resources, like in the training and resources thing, it could be as simple as, you know, the FOIA and open meetings that upon, you know, following, you know, the, the biannual elections, the board will engage, you know, a formal training with a professional resource on, on the Open Meetings Act, as well as take the, you know, the required attorney general's training for these other things like, you know, and then from, you know, so that could be, but I was thinking more in terms of like for February, let's try and have, what are the topics we want, like what are the sections we want to have in the handbook? And then from there, we can begin to work on the content. But I'd like to kind of get, you know, that outline and, and table of contents, you know, in place by February 18th. So we can all kind of agree that these are the sections we, we think would be most beneficial to have in a trust, in a library trustee handbook. And then from there, we can begin to identify sources that, you know, I, you know, the, the, you know, those first, you know, the first two items in the job description were going to be copy and paste on a state law. You know, that's going to be an easy one.
Yeah.
What we decide we want is more of a, do we want to add on to what do we, what non-binding language do we want to have to say that this is kind of what this, the board thinks is the description of, of the trustee for a library trustee and, and build from there. But I think the first, the first part I think would be helpful is that table of contents for the handbook. And from there, we can begin to look at what, you know, what are those things piece of, you know, and that. And then do we want our, you know, and that will help us identify content from other libraries that we need, that we really like, that's something that's already there and we can adjust it slightly to ourselves. Or is this a section where we've seen a couple of examples and we don't really think anything fits for us? We need to build something from scratch. Does that make sense?
I think we'll have a lot more answers next month, y'all. We're very early in this. And so I think there's going to be some things that are super easy to pull from sources. And I, I think we can do that actually ahead of next meeting. I don't know that I want to wait for an outline. Because we've started this, like some of us, we've already started and some of it isn't a choice or a decision. So we just have to pull it. And I'm very eager to do this. So I, I think it's the decisions that would be like, if we have an ethics statement, that would be blank. We're not going to call that without engaging the board. So I say we'll have an email sent to you all with some sort of follow-up before the next board meeting. Because I, I would like it to move a little faster than that, I think. Because I know originally we were hoping to do this before elections so that like we could have onboarding information and bylaw information. I don't know that we're going to have that, but we could at least have, like I already did some of that. So we can just add it. Like I, I think we can get going.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we will run this, we've run it through the attorneys, but we will also run through ILA or feeling to kind of say, okay, what do you think about?
No, yes.
You don't think so?
I don't think that this is us.
And we're pulling from law, like we're pulling from statute. We're pulling, we're not going to be creating stuff. If we're getting into creating stuff, then we're going to pull you all in. We're not going to do that.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is not going to be a binding, you know, you know, this is not a huge, you know, governance.
It's the guideline.
Yeah, this is not, yeah, this is not, this is not a binding policy, governing policy. This is.
It just hopefully will be a nice way for, like if we have a question, we can just look at it and then have our answer, right? Or like, I mean, I think all of us going to board, maybe not Matt, but like all of, the rest of the board have a lot of questions around like what it really looks like. I mean, I was appointed and I, I feel like I could have, I would have loved like an onboarding document or something. Like this is what you should do once you are an elected official for the library. So I don't know. I think, I think we all have had some conversation around what we want. I think we can make it happen. We just got to get going.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm feeling motivated.
Need a lot of input from us at this point, like from us that, along with the search committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Question, statement, et cetera. I think it might make sense as like a preamble to have like that kind of ethics statement at the front before you get to the job description is like why this is an explanation, a little bit of like an overview and explanation about why and what, like what the ethical expectations are. Like this is a non-binding piece and I, I'm happy to go in and to trap something.
That is welcome.
Then can be torn apart.
We appreciate it.
Still, your opinion for that, what would you say about that?
All right. Thank you, everyone. We'll continue to, to move on to that. Then the, just a quick update on the holistic survey. It has gone out. As of Friday, we had 43% response rate, which include, which means 55 respondents. They are confident that they are going to get their target of, if not more, of 70% participation. I reached out to them this afternoon if they had an updated number for me that I could share tonight. I did not hear back from them, but they are going to provide another update this week. They have, they're going to send another, I think they were supposed to send out another reminder email today or tomorrow. And they'll definitely send, send out another one next week. And they're going to continue to do follow-up after that at shorter intervals to get to that 70%. I did swing by Costco and spring for a giant bag of candy to bring in here and to thank and encourage staff for participation. I took to Hard Billy's comment about his needing to use candy to incentivize participation for our internal ones. And I said, all right, well, I, I will do my part to incentivize for us. So we will continue to do that. And as soon, and when I get the updated numbers from this week from Holistic, I'll make sure to forward that to everyone on the board so they know where we're at with that. But they, as, as is designed, I don't know who signed, I don't know who's completed it as yet. So I cannot give targeted candy for that. We'll just work on the trust system for people and on the honor system for that. So that concludes that. If there's no questions, we'll go on to the Park District IGA.
Yes. So this is actually a really wonderful program that I'm excited to talk about. The Park District approached us about doing a collaborative program where we check out to park passes for them. So we have passes to the ice skating rink, the clubhouse indoor playground pass. And then in the spring, we'll have passes to the pool. So we, there is each week, there's one pass per activity that's available for checkout. A pass that can be checked out, you know, is available for one week. And this was a pilot project that was launched by them, you know, we do museum pass programs. And so this is in, again, I'm like in my head about, you know, where I'd put this in the board report. But to me, this is antitrust, this is access, you know. So these activities for the park all have a cost associated with them. So this allows people to come in and have some equitable access to these, to these options. You do have to be a good leave it a park, a new library card holder. So it's just our card holders. They're only available at the main library. And I just want to give some recognition to Martin Church House and Bart Fitzgerald, who Bart was the manager of collections and Mark was the manager of creative services. This was brought up in like December, November, December, and they moved on it so quickly to the point where Jan already gave me this IGA and they already signed it. So I said, why don't we in December? And so we do need an intergovernmental agreement to ensure that we are, you know, working together in this partnership. But we're really excited about it. It's been very popular so far. People have been lining up to use them. And, and I think it's a really wonderful opportunity to give people access. So.
And it also is wonderful for the Park District because people will use this and they go, oh, now I can get my pool pass or whatever. So, so win-win.
It's a win-win. I agree. So you guys just have to vote on whether you want to sign this IGA and then that gets decided.
Some moved.
I particularly like section D.
Section D?
Endemification. It is always my favorite section of every contract that I review for the library. I always check to make sure.
That we're covered?
That we're covered.
Thank you for that, Matt.
Especially with ice skating.
Yes, exactly.
Yes.
Is there, it's been moved. Is there a second?
I will second even with the typos I found.
All right. Are there any further questions? Concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none. It is adopted. Thank you, everyone. Madarima, do you, do you have any?
Can I ask questions? It's not dependent on voting. I, I'm all for it. But I just was wondering, I noticed there's nothing for the CRC. Is that something that they might add?
I don't know. You want to, you want to call Jan and ask her? This is, you know, this is what they're willing to give us at this point. Yeah.
Carol, it's great. It's really wonderful. It's just I.
I would love to see more. I already, after the first week, staff go, can we ask her more? And I asked Jan and she said no. You know, I think the CRC is a great thing to add and so.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, I've been curious.
Always. Going forward.
I think it's really, really wonderful. It really bothered, and then kind of the fees got a little bit higher.
Moving forward, we should have a copy of our attorneys included, just saying.
Well, we should, yeah, I, I think we could, you know, success builds opportunity for more partnerships.
I agree.
So I think let's, let's take this win and move on from there. Since the search committee did not meet last week, Madarima, I don't know if you, do you have anything that might need closed session? Because I don't otherwise. Okay. I didn't think so. I should have checked with you before the meeting so I didn't have to put you on the spot like that. But with that, we have concluded our agenda for this evening. Thank you, everyone. I declare as adjourned for this meeting.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Yeah, thank Lee so much for yesterday's email for the staff advisory about governmental visits. It was absolutely beautifully.